We'll, are we live?
Said anything?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Temple Planning Board Meeting. I call this meeting to order. Approval of draft minutes from November 4th.
I sent some changes to Kathy, which I think everybody saw the revised version. I didn't catch that.
Am I getting that right? That's not correct, right? Or am I reading it wrong?
You're reading it wrong, yeah. It's very common.
Just what I'm reading. Anybody else have any changes?
Will be accepted as amended. Yes.
I'm abstaining.
Yes. Oh yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Minutes are approved. All right. Invitation for public comment other than, is Irene, Irene Rose. Other than your consultation with us, is there anybody else that has any public comment before we get started? Okay, so new business. Arena Rose, welcome. And, gentlemen.
This is my son Andy, guys, and my son Tom, guys.
Nice to meet you guys. Yeah, welcome to Temple Planning Board. So we have Christine forwarded us all maps of your proposal. So I guess.
Questions? Did you see the questions? They came a little bit later. I could throw away that as well.
So did you, how did you, did you want to basically just introduce yourself and, you know, what you're.
Give an overview?
Yeah, basically an overview of what you're trying to accomplish.
So I own the property at Tom's, which is lot lot four lot one. Which is on at five six two West Road. And sixty-six acres. And seven years ago, we put in a road. It's, I guess you'd call it a driveway or drive. I don't know if it qualifies as a private road or not, but I don't think that matters because, and what we would like to do is to divide it so that there's two pieces. And I call it the upper part or the back. Become a separate piece from the bigger piece. And I have seven hundred and ninety or seven hundred and eighty feet of road frontage. But I was told that that won't work because this piece needs to have more frontage. So what we have come up with is a couple of possibilities. So Andy owns this piece, which is actually in conservation, but I'm not conservation, isn't it called? And that's lot eight. And we were thinking, and I want to give him this piece that I'm breaking off from my on my piece. So we have, in order to figure out how we could get road frontage, we were thinking, could we purchase road frontage from this neighbor here, which is lot two, like three hundred feet with just like a strip that we wouldn't actually build a road on? Or if that neighbor wouldn't be interested in selling that strip, then I could do it with the other neighbor with a similar piece. And, and we're also wondering, can we just do the whole thing as a lot line adjustment? And, and what we would do is, is make the road that's existing have either like some kind of legal agreement, I don't know if it's like right of way or some other agreement so that Andy can use that as his road, his access.
That twelve acre piece in the back does not exist as of right now.
No, it does not. No, this is just a, a line. We haven't surveyed it yet because we're waiting to see if we can do it.
Technically, indeed, it is two lots, but it's divided right here. There's a front lot and a back lot. But at some point, we're going to town and combine them for the tax map purposes. But indeed, there are two separate lots.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
That would help in any way to know that.
There are two separate deeds, actually, from the back. Were they in one deed and they just tracked one, tracked two?
Okay, so it's one.
There's a stone wall and everything. It's all stone walls, one full pieces.
Yes, as far as the town's concerned, it's just.
So lot four dash one is seven hundred and eighty feet of frontage.
That it's in the mountain district. So it's would need three hundred and fifty feet. And I, I think I might have told you three hundred because I thought it was rural residential, but I looked today. It's actually in the mountain district. So three hundred and fifty feet, but you still have enough. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, no, it's actually three fifty.
Yeah, I never came down and looked to see if it was in the mountain.
Yeah. It's just on the tax card. That's where I found it, so.
Well, it'd be nice to be able to figure out a way for you to be able to do this without having to do these other options of purchasing land from your butters.
So I had suggested you look at the PRD and, yeah, you didn't want to do that.
Seems kind of complicated.
It is kind of. It is.
We want to make it more streamlined and make it better. We, we're going through, we're, we're working on it.
Yeah.
We have good intentions.
One of the pieces that I read, you know, the whole thing you have online. And for the mountain district, it was different than as well. So I mean, maybe it was easier in the mountain district.
Well, there's a mountain conservation district. Maybe that's what you were looking at, but you could still do a traditional PRD in the mount, in, in the mountain district.
Yeah, but it seemed to have a separate way to do division in a mountain district.
Yeah, you could get more lots if you did the conservation subdivision. Yeah, but you're, since you're only doing two lots, it wouldn't make sense for you to do that complicated.
Have a hope that in the future we could, we put in a third lot down here. This is down, this is the lower part by the road. If, you know, if, if we were able to accomplish this, then maybe in the future, not necessarily right now. But if it made it easier to do it right now, we could do it right now.
Well, you only have, yeah, that's complicated. It's really tricky.
If you didn't have that proposed third lot in the future, a PRD, a simple two lot PRD would be, seems like it'd be the best way to go, but you would, you'd have to have a homeowners association. Which the two of you would both be in, and then, you know, that attaches, connects to the deed and I'm going, what am I missing?
Nothing. I'd say, yeah, I had to explain.
That would be the quickest.
Be in conservation, but you couldn't do the third lot if they were going to do that.
No, so if you wanted to do that third lot in the future, you would have to upgrade this driveway to a town road.
Well, they should still be able to do three lots because she's got sixty-six acres.
No, Randy just.
So that's not a frontage issue.
She's got plenty of frontage.
Yeah, yeah, because you don't have three hundred feet for each lot that you create.
Right. A shared driveway, which would be subject to an HOA and driveway maintenance.
Right, it is more complicated. And the other thing with PRD is a certain amount of land goes into conservation forever. It's irrevocable. Once you set up a PRD, that's it.
Okay, so.
Interjects.
Are not allowed in the mountain district. Oh. Rural or eventual agriculture. Sorry, just.
You said.
Yeah, we have the mountain conservation district zoning in our.
Does, does it allow PRDs?
If it's a mountain conservation subdivision. Which is different. Yeah.
There's one other option that we've thought about, which is one of the maps that I sent around, which is to just do this strip that goes down to the road.
And give the frontage.
And gives the frontage, yeah. So we would never be able to do this other.
Then you still access the property from that shared driveway.
Driveway have, have an easement to the back lot.
Correct.
Yep. And you don't have to involve anybody else. Wouldn't have to buy or purchase land from anybody else. It's a shame to to do that to the land, but I guess.
Can you make a lot in that form, I, I guess, as long as you can get this.
There's two in town that are like that, but yeah.
You know how wide this strip would need to be? Is there rules about that?
Two hundred and fifty, you still have that two hundred and fifty foot.
Well, that would be in the.
It's, it's actually three, it's big, three, I can't remember, three hundred and three fifty, but I printed out three hundred and fifty.
Acres is this proposed?
So I, I'm saying twelve acres because I want to make it so that um, we can keep ten acres in current use and then have a building lot. And then my other question actually about that is, can you have a accessory dwelling unit, a, a, a separate one? If you, if you did a separate one, do you need two acres to take out of current use or so, you know, there was twelve, you had twelve acres and you took two acres out, could you have two houses?
It would be the developed area. So let's say you had, if you had both houses beside each other, then the developed area would be a fairly small footprint. If you separated them and each had a yard and a barn and all that stuff, all that stuff can't be in current needs.
Right, but so how, what's the minimum size of the developed area that you can take out? It's a minimum amount you can take out to build a house?
I don't think there's a minimum. I think it's general rule with them, people at least do an acre.
That's what I remember.
But I don't.
That's why I came up with the twelve acres.
Yeah.
But it would be probably more than that if we went down here. I mean, there's a couple of acres going down.
Right, because the road, yeah, the road can't.
Just, I think, to answer her question of the width of that strip, we see other widths of strips in the recent subdivision we saw of fifty feet. So that was probably like a line of a, of a connection from, say, the road back to.
Right, back to here. And, and here too, just fifty feet from the road.
I think so. I'll let you.
Yeah, I mean, I couldn't find anything definitive on that either. I think Ken Perry would be the best person to answer because I think there has to be a ten to fifteen foot right of way for the, on the road. Yeah, but it, I don't know the width of West Road and.
It would be from your legal property line. Wherever that is on West Road. I know mine, I, I live on West Road also, and my legal property line is the stone wall several feet from the pavement. Just, just to keep that in mind.
It doesn't really matter too much to us.
Yeah, just as you're planning that.
Yeah.
If she did the third option, how would that affect the future lot that she might want to create?
Exactly.
You can't, you can't.
Yeah.
And so if we did the third option, but my conservation land, what then, then did a lot line adjustment and we purchased road frontage from the neighbors, my conservation land could get road frontage and be the, and as long as that conservancy is okay with that, I could leave that land out of the easement.
So your lot four dash eight that's in the easement has frontage on West Road?
No, no, but I'm saying if we wanted to try to have a third lot without doing any subdivision, we could have a lot conservation land be that third lot.
Yeah. Couldn't, they don't want to do it as a conservation.
But if we were adding another twelve acres to it.
Yeah, they might be the same.
Then, I was concerned about their proposal that was in pink there, that future lot in pink, that if you did the option three, you would lose, you would lose the ability to be able to put that, that lot in pink in after.
Right.
Now, of course, zoning rules could change in the future, but you can't depend on that.
So if we wanted to do this plan, I, I'm sorry, I have it upside down. Do you, you think we could do it if we, if, if we were able to buy this piece?
If you had, if you had three hundred and fifty feet of front, in the green, purchasing land from the butter, then you have seven hundred and eighty. Yes, you would have enough to do the, the both, yes, you would.
Okay, so I mean, so so we could approach the neighbor and ask if that, if we could buy those. And, and if that's so, then we could make it into three lots.
Is there a house on that one that's?
Yeah, she's way over here.
She's way over. Oh, right, a new one. Yeah, 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 I remember. Yeah.
Yeah.
How much would you need to buy?
I, well, if it, if it's fifty feet, times three fifty, plus then, I guess, fifty feet back to here. It doesn't come out to very much.
Fifty feet is probably why Randy's got a, an easement that runs from Webster over to one of his PRDs that was entered and developed. That's a fifty foot line.
Yep. That's what I was looking at, I think, or I was recalling that.
So it sounds like we got two options.
Well, so it seemed like, does it require my conservation land? Or could this be done using just her land, having three lots?
If you purchase that.
If we purchase that.
Yeah, then you don't have to touch the conservation land.
Three.
Yep.
And there doesn't have to be a road put in here. That's, I mean, that was one of my biggest questions.
No, you would not.
Yeah.
And that's the answers we were looking for.
Looking for your question.
It would be a deed to easement. Where your son to have the use of the driveway to get to that lot you're going to create.
You're saying this is.
No, 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 your driveway that you already have, your current driveway? Yeah, his, the new lot in green would have a deed and easement to be able to use that existing road to access your new house.
So that's different from what is called right of way?
Same thing.
It's the same.
Yeah, it just has to be, it has to be in green.
Yeah. Hopefully help, will you help?
Can I ask one?
Yeah.
Public question. So I noticed adjacent to the blue lines, the Temple Plaza works, small lot.
Yes.
Is there access from your lot there?
Oh, so there's this, like, right of way, it just actually drawn incorrectly.
Okay.
Um, because I actually came and spoke when it was like six years ago, when, what's his name? He just did the last thing he did.
Randy?
Randy. He went walking and discovered my son was camping over here. And, and that was Tom. And, and, and we decided, I mean, that was kind of a little bit weird, I'm going to show up, right? But anyway, we decided we needed to inform them that the trail goes on our land. Okay. And it actually crosses a stream. And they were driving through the stream with their four wheelers, and so that was kind of concerning for us.
Okay.
And so he, he had agreed that it did look like it's been along my land. But so anyway, to answer your question, there's a trail here that slightly dips onto my land.
It's interesting. I'm the president now of the Historical Society in Temple. So we're in Randy, you know, I've worked with Randy on the, on the committee. We're getting ready to go up there and do a fall.
Oh, wow.
Well, we, we.
As far as nobody going up there anymore.
Yeah, we're going to be going up with some saws and snips and things just to, you know, clear, keep the path open and go in, because we haven't done it for several years. So we're getting ready to do that in the upcoming weekends, hopefully if we don't get snow. So that, that's interesting that you're saying that goes on your land, because I don't think anybody knew that. Yeah.
You could tell, there's a stone wall that is sort of, this slightly missing where it goes through and then it picks up again.
Yeah, this, this isn't one of the, you know, temple vacation highlights.
I don't think, yeah, it's, once every couple of years, the Historical Society goes up there to say, we looked at it and, you know.
It's like the access, oh, she's right.
Bradley, yes, yep.
It's like all growing in. So like, you couldn't even go up there in a vehicle now.
Yeah, that's what I've heard. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Which is kind of a good thing.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, if in this process, it's a good, you know, there's an opportunity to document where that trail is, so we get the accesses.
Yeah.
Just get it right in case there's confusion in the future.
Sure.
So where does the trail go actually? According to like legal, I've never been legal. I tried to find it once, and that was probably on your lands. We prefer it not go on.
Yeah, unless, unless maybe a little bridge was built, you know, I think that might be okay.
Just a concern about the water.
That season, maybe it turns out in the summer. Because it's mostly, you know, four wheelers that are nothing to do with the town or the historical society. It's the people that, you know, are just having fun in the woods, right? So I don't think that they're coming anymore because of the being needing to be opened up, right? So maybe you just don't open up their access.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't really need to be more than a walking path.
Yeah.
There's nothing there. Chain link fence, some old ruins, so. Well, thank you for.
Yeah, but if it doesn't, maybe that is an opportunity to, to either, either document where it should be.
Yeah, move the trail.
Align it with whatever, whatever right of way access is.
Yeah, same time with the historical society because of the first ones.
Yeah, and is that all Bradley land, the, the, the one that next door that's all Bradley?
It is, yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, so as far as your proposed subdivision, are there any other questions you have for us?
Thank you.
All right, yeah, thanks for coming in, guys. Hopefully we helped. Good forward to seeing you when you're ready to move forward.
So when we are ready to move forward, we would, we would have a surveyor survey the line.
Three lots.
How long, how big is this big green going to be? Thinking about twelve, you said?
Well, so, I want to make sure there's twelve on.
Perfect, aren't you? But you get fifty, sixty-five?
Sixty-six altogether.
Okay. I think just survey the perimeter and drop your lines.
Yeah, I guess we, I mean, we have a good survey of the perimeter, but.
You need a little bit of survey of, of precedence, so you can set pins there.
If, if they purchase land from.
If, yeah, I guess that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's kind of the idea, right? Because you want to be able to get three lots and, yourself, either her lot, lot four point three.
Which is Gail Gladu.
Yeah.
Yep.
The other, one last question then is, so this deed easement for the driveway, does that need to be accomplished before we come to you, or is that something to do after?
It could go sort of in hand in hand.
Yeah.
So you would identify the location on your survey plan. And some people, some attorneys like to have, you know, bearings, distance, angles, all that stuff on every jig and jog, and others will just go with the idea that, uh, you can say the driveway exists now as a twenty foot easement, you know? However you present it.
Okay.
Agree with.
They need to talk to Kent about it or no?
So.
Yeah, they're going to use the same driveway, I think they're good.
You did agree that a per test is because.
Yes.
For each.
For each lot.
Yes.
But before.
Witnessed by the health officer, Pete.
Yeah, so make sure he's there.
Now, you could have the lots, but if they don't pass a per test, then of course.
Then you can't go. So we don't have to have the per test done before dividing the property.
No, but it certainly doesn't hurt to do it first because it's a cheap, quick, easy thing to do. And then, so you're verified.
It's, and then it's on your plans. You don't have to pay for the plans to be redone. It's, usually it's ninety-nine percent of the time, it's, when you're going to go to all that work, you want the per test on the plans. Which is pretty, you know, it's just a, a backhoe and Pete Caswell witnesses it, and it's quick and fast. Pete Caswell, the health officer in town here, he lived, yeah.
As well as soil science.
Yeah, he's Caswell pump, he's a, he's a well guy, yeah, he's.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, there you go, yeah.
Three of us lived at Swinlow Cross Country Ski Area for like twenty-eight years. And he did the wells over there and everything.
Yeah, he's well known.
When you actually do your scientific system, that's stateable. Licensed.
Yep.
Well, you can install it yourself as a homeowner.
All right, guys.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, new business, second order business would need, we received a letter from Carol in the office. Actually, it came from Stacy Clark originally, right, from the, the top player.
Oh, yeah, the farm.
Being concerned about, so the definition of a farm and the, the reason this arose is because the laws for registering side by sides are ATVs or gators, they now require that you have an agricultural plate. So the question came up about, you know, what constitutes a farm? You have, you know, ten chickens in your backyard, is that a farm? That means you get to register your.
So what does that mean, we, we're talking about Caswell, what's that mean for him? Well, there's a, I'm sorry, I didn't understand about this.
Like, because he's got. He has a plate and he drives one, and he doesn't have a farm.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Neighbor has golf cart, and all he has to do is put rear disc brakes on his golf cart, and this will be.
So.
So where does that thing come up and it's that, the gate, the other?
I don't, I don't, I, I don't know. I mean, I didn't know if this was a planning board issue or a select issue.
That include the response we got from the town attorney?
I don't think so.
Okay. What she sent back didn't line up with this testing. I don't have a copy of it.
The DMV just come out of working with Stacy at the town office. The DMV sent out a message, and I don't remember the date, saying that agricultural plates can no longer be used for these four wheelers, and they have to be an industrial plate.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's why, that's why people are, are that, right? Or do I have that reversed? Maybe it's.
I think it's reversed, but.
It's reversed, you're right.
From the attorney about more detail about this, it seemed rather confusing. We'll get it sent to you.
Do you need something from the planning board for this?
No.
Okay.
Well, I don't know if it's relevant, but I, a while ago, bought a Cabo, uh, not Cabo, County New York, and I wanted to register it. So I called the town office, and the response I got was we don't want to go through the headache of trying to register that vehicle. We don't want to go through the the headache of trying to register that vehicle. Uh, if you want my opinion, you can, you should be able to just. You know, cause I'm on a dirt road on North Road, they said you should be fine, cause I gotta go a mile up the road to hit my mailbox. So I just wanted to run up and get my mail, so she said, you should be fine. Well, then recently my son came back and told me that a friend of. His sons got pulled over by the warden. And almost ticketed for for driving a, you know, an ATV on the on the.
Without registration.
Without registration, so I was gonna go back and and re look at that, so I. I wonder if the ag plate thing came up as rather than register it as a street legal vehicle. This is an option and now they're finding that there's some headaches with that option, does that?
That sounds like it makes sense.
Well, in the first regards to this. We don't enforce it, it's not gonna make any difference.
My, that's my, my point is it's fine for the town to tell me, yeah, we're not gonna enforce it. Yeah, if the warden, you know.
So it sounds like the select board's working on this with the legal counsel.
It's not a planning board issue.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that was, I mean, I just sent what we have the definition for our farm and our zoning ordinance, but it's basically first to the state RSA, it's.
Just out of curiosity, do you have any insight as to what you're gonna look at for qualifying as a? One side is I have four chickens and I want to be a farm. The other side is, um, I have, I'm a working farm and that's where all my money comes in. And like in in my example, I have an LOC, so could that be? You know, if you file for an LOC. Does that qualify as a farm that keeps you out of four chicken?
Well, that's one, that's that's when we'll get involved. If it gets, once it gets to that point, that's when we'll be involved because we'll have to adopt. Uh, laws, uh, def- defining farm.
Right, that's where the zoning.
That's what we come in, but I think it's premature for us right now, it's still.
We had no idea.
I'm just curious, I mean, I, it's not the end of the world, I can't go in my U T V on the road to get mail.
People depend on them.
Yeah.
And so it got to allow it somehow.
A side note, I went, I called the post office and asked them about getting a mailbox. At my address, and they said, well, but we're not allowed to back up and there's no place to turn around. So I, so I said, well. So, so I said, so I said, if I put in a turnaround. In my road. Well, that worked, and they said, sure, just, uh, we'll come look at it in the spring. So I put a turnaround in. And then I, we contacted them this year and they said, yeah, we're not doing it. It adds two, it adds two miles. Two miles to our seventy mile route.
Yeah.
And we're not doing it, and then I looked up there, basically, whatever the postmaster says is gospel in this state.
Have you ever been to the towns like Stoddard, different towns out in the, in the sticks that in the beginning of the project, there's. A bank of mailboxes, twenty of them.
Yeah.
It it's for that rea-, you know, they, they, that's why they did that, so. You just need somebody that lives down further on North Road towards Barry's Orchard to be able to allow you to put your mailbox down.
There's only one other house on North Road, they're between me and there, and so our two mailboxes sitting at the end of North Road, because they walk off the road.
Well, if you go over to Randy's Stungate, there's a whole mailbox.
Yeah, there you go, that's a, there you go, that's an example of it, that's right.
It's not the end of the world, it'd be just a convenience thing and not having to go chase down the mail every day, so. Anything in the world.
Okay.
It's not worth fighting.
We went from four wheelers to mailboxes. Okay, uh, third order business, uh. Do up such hazard mitigation plan, uh, comment period, did everybody get the email? On that?
I did not.
Anybody have anything to, everybody understands that?
I mean, I opened their document. Very extensive.
Yeah.
It really is not that much relevance.
It it events, really, yeah.
It just required to send this out to.
Well, it's from now till December twelfth, so we have a month. Look at her comment. Okay. Uh, next order of business would be. Well, actually.
You want to move up?
I had, uh.
Yep, we can move that up.
Randy's, uh, project, the boarding light farm PRD. So we are, I know Nicole, Nicole's here to speak about this, and. But we are. Waiting for. DES state approval.
Yep.
Before we file for the registry deeds.
Yeah.
And was there anything else?
Well, actually, related to that, the select board wants to bring something up, but we can do that.
Okay, and and who? Who, um. Who did they, who, how does, how was DES notified? Is that Carol from the office emailing, or is that, how does that?
I'm not sure.
I talked to Randy about that after we spoke and Sanford is taking care of that.
Sanford does, okay.
There's a tight deadline.
Yeah. So is that always the engineer that does that?
Yeah, because you have to, in order to file, you'd have to be.
A license.
You have to be a licensed surveyor and subject designer. But the town will get a notification. Owner and then like we. Or somebody would also, whoever filed possibly.
I also have another check written, thought that he was missing a check. You guys, so I have one here.
Yep.
So I have. I just have these.
Yeah, this one you can. Thank you. Yeah, sooner the better, so it's an end of year.
And so I guess Nicole, did you want to make a comment of, I mean. Cause we're gonna jump in with Sarah here, it's gonna be a while.
This document has caused too much trouble about the the roads that.
The waiver.
Town attorney has said, no, this is not necessary. The select board is not going to sign it, and I should drop it, just just drop it. It's, it was. Because of a bad bit of information that was given the planning board, there's actually no need for it, so.
So, but I, my sense was, cause I listened to the select board meeting, that you guys weren't comfortable with the notice of decision as it was written because it. Says.
That's.
So my question back to the attorney when I saw your letter was, how do we fix this? Cause we've already voted on the notice of decision, we, I couldn't make that change myself, wouldn't it be illegal, so. Yeah, I don't know what the, how do we fix it?
Right, so. Our problem, my client's problem with the notice of decision is that. You required this document, that one wasn't necessary, but two. Is a very specific requirement. That my client was required to get the select board to sign off on, but the select board has never approved that form. And so.
They did actually, at a previous meeting.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Going to. I may not want that going forward.
Yeah, and that's fine, I, you know.
The way that this happened, I apologize, I was not at the last planning board meeting, but I was ill, happens occasionally. Um, so I had to play catch up here and. Because of the way the the notice of decision was written to only accept that one document, essentially what you did was you tied. The applicant's hands. And you required something from the select board that the select board wasn't going to follow through on. But the way that the notice of decision was written is that the. The plan was not fully approved unless this particular document got signed, so if the select board wasn't going to sign it. Then the plan would never get fin- reach final approval. So when you're writing the notice of decisions as you move forward. I would recommend, well, you should know now that this is not required, but just to not be so specific on documents that are not. Required, usually it's, you, what you can do is you can say. Final approval dependent on receiving all of the required approvals from the select board, and then you let the select board do that. So the only way to correct it, because you all voted and you issued a notice of decision. We can appeal to you. We can only appeal to the zoning board of adjustment. Or we could appeal to the housing appeals board. Right, so both of those are costly.
Could, that select board could in this case approve that. Document if you wanted.
Right, and so that's what we did was I went through, I I modified the document to make it accurate and. More narrow than what it was originally drafted as, and I went to the select board and I said, I know you've been told not to approve this. But I explained again how the plan will never reach final approval without it because of the way you guys issued the notice of decision. And the select floor.
We did approve. But that's not the one you guys.
Yeah, which was fine, I mean, I gave Randy that draft of the one that came from the attorney on September nineteenth. So he had it for a long time. Uh, that's when I mailed it to him, um, so. You know, it it's like for my part, it was frustrating, cause I don't, I, you know, I gave it to him and said at the meeting when we approved it. Check this for errors and if there's anything that needs to be changed, bring it to the select board, because the planning board. We don't care what that document said, uh, you know, it was what the attorney told us we needed, but. How, you know, I knew that it wasn't, uh, you know, I just was guessing on some of the, his information. And so I, when I handed it, please check it and make sure it's correct. Um, but he had it for two months, that form.
Okay, so we're now having signed agreement that everybody is okay with.
Yeah.
For this project.
Yeah.
Um, I will say that. The first time I ever saw the document was. The day after your last planning board meeting, and it's not part of any of the online documents that you've accumulated and put on the website. So in the future, if you are having documents that are related to an application, all of those should be available on the website.
Yeah, we did.
I did review all of the documents that were there. When I was brought on to make sure that I knew all the pieces that had happened and. It wasn't on your website either, so it did not look like it was an official. Document coming into this until your very last meeting where it was presented to Randy. Who conveyed to me that he was told he had to sign it and he looked at it, he noticed something was wrong and so he didn't sign it.
Yeah, I mean, we don't typically put draft documents up on the website and, you know, until they're. Approved and finalized, so that's probably why, but he, he did have it and we talked about it at that October meeting as well. When you had, um, objected to the extra form and I had put, he put it on plans, even though we had said our attorney's telling us we need this document. And he put language on the plans and I said, that's fine, I'll go back to the attorney and tell them that's what it is. That's where it is, and I told her that, and that's when we got the bad information from the other attorney who said. You know, we needed the form. And so that's when we moved forward. So unfortunately, it was a whole lot of.
Right.
Frustration and aggravation for everyone involved.
The problem's resolved now, and going forward, we don't need the thing, so that's the two key points.
Going forward, it will just be on the plan.
If there's anything.
If there's a road, it can be, it can be on the plan.
Yeah, and I I do think we should look at what's in our zoning, because in our zoning, it does say in a form that is, I mean, I can. Tell you what it says exactly, um. A waiver of town responsibility for municipal services and a form acceptable to town council. So. That's what it's, that's what was required.
Okay, so that could be on the plan.
And, yeah, and there's no, nothing in the RSA's that say what that form needs to be, it just says acceptable to town council. So whereas like the conservation part of it very clearly says on the plan, and the attorney initially wanted a separate document for that. And so I argued with her about it back and forth and said, I don't think we need that. Um, so just so you know, I was advocating to make this easy.
Well, the RSA does make it pretty clear that the private roads. Uh, the waiver can be on the plan or any other reportable documents, right, in the same RSA.
It, it's that, yeah, or any other recordable document where it's.
In this case, it's in two places, it's on the plan that'll be reported and in the.
HOA.
The declarations.
Yep. Yep.
And now a third unnecessary document, but.
Well, we. Dollars versus. Application fees for ZBA and all that, and legal fees for Randy, so easier.
Well. We'll see how things go this March. For all our PRD proposed. Uh, things, but no doubt we all, I think, probably agree that we need to figure out a way to streamline our.
Yeah.
We got it, we have to make it that, we have to make it streamlined, I guess is the best word, right? Gotta be a way to do it.
See why people don't do them.
Yeah, yeah, that's why, they have a perfect situation that.
It's a very simple thing.
But she, she even though, she said, I don't know, it's.
Yeah.
So it shouldn't be that way. Yeah, we need to fix that for sure, that has to be a priority.
Yep, definitely.
Just the last thing I'd like to say is that when you do, go ahead and, um. Report the plan, whoever it is that's going to do that, uh, if you could. Just get me a book and page number right away so I can then file the next set of documents. So we can get this all closed up. That would be really helpful.
Oh, no, uh, it'll be one of us read, uh. Matt ran down last time to. For the Beal project.
I'm not sure when they issued the book and page, I don't think they're at the book and page at the same time.
The day you got.
Keith would always bring them back. Yeah.
Cause I need that information to put into the declaration so that I can then report the declaration.
It'll be Russ or Matt or anybody one of.
I feel like Carol gets a notice too. In the office, cause it gets written on the MyLars in the office as well, I think Carol does that.
Oh, she.
Yeah.
Physically does.
She physically writes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Putting it out there that whoever does it.
And while we're talking about registry of deeds and we're talking about MyLars. I'll take the blame on chairman, I messed up. Matt delivered it. Jim and I signed it, secretary and chairman. No Pete Caswell signature. And Matt went down and reported, I mean, they, they took it. So Pete wasn't gonna give the Beals a building permit. And I, of course, I said, Pete, they have a signed Mylar down there. You could go down and sign it, you could give them the building permit. But he's. He was a little, you know, anyway, I apologized, so you're, you've requested another Mylar, it's gonna be at our expense, but. Another Mylar so we can sign it, have Pete sign it and run back down to the national. Give them the correct document that has Pete's signature on it. We do one for the town.
So why doesn't we just record that one now?
Take.
Well, we. Take the one that he signed.
One he signed and we run down there and ask our other one back.
Then that's, oh, I had timely wise, because John's gonna get me one, but. Will it be today?
Is it gonna be that simple that we bring them down the Mylar with the? And they will give us the other one? Okay, so.
There's no swap.
But we are, we need another Mylar for our town office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I figured that might take.
We can run down right now, though.
Right.
With the one we have, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't need it today.
Yeah, we have paper copies, yeah, okay, anyway, that happened. All right, well, thanks Nicole.
I don't think so.
We're good. All right, so we'll, let's skip these other items and go right to, uh, Sarah Bollinger, Southwest Regional Planning. How are you, Sarah? Great.
Can I just say on that last issue? Do we have other options for attorneys because? I feel like they're, they rushed through that whole process.
They, I, they must be quite busy.
I think they are very busy.
This is Inspector Morgan.
Yeah. And I've had, this is. Been an ongoing issue. Okay, because.
Town needs to look into the two, because yes, we've been having delays. But the one we used to use that we talked to all the time, uh, can't remember his name.
Joe Driscoll.
Joe Driscoll.
Disappeared, he took a lot of vacation time this summer, so I don't, I don't know. And so was, I've been communicating directly with Laura, but then I. Like, this is the second or third time that she's bumped me to somebody new or.
The municipal association.
And literally.
Have anybody qualified to be.
Well, I'll be at the conference tomorrow, so I'll, I will see Laura.
That, that's free.
Yeah. Yeah, they won't comment on a case.
They won't.
No, no, just general.
To go legal advice, they'll say, well, talk to your attorney. That's what they usually say.
Yeah, I know when I was moderator, I'd use them a lot, but then I had, I ended up calling Bill Drescher. For the real important stuff.
Okay. Um, so anyway, that I just.
Um, so anyway, that I just, we've got some important stuff coming up and. I mean, I literally, I emailed them that morning and I think that's when they're like, oh no. Because I emailed them the week before to remind them, I emailed to confirm they received. And it was still like three thirty in the afternoon, the day of our meeting, that I finally got a response, so.
Get anything from, if you hear any leaves, we'll.
I'll, well, I'll be looking at the conference, uh, have booths set up um to see what other options are.
Okay, Sarah, ten minutes eight, you're on.
We read all of the lines and material.
There's a lot here, take a lot.
Where do we start?
Um, it's on page two, it goes through the recommendations and. You guys can style some edits around anything you have, if you have any changes to the language that is um prevented. In the draft warrant. That was for you guys.
Yes.
That's the one dated November eighteen.
Yes. Um, so, let's see, and this is, I don't think there's gonna be any surprises for you guys in here. So, beginning with PRD ordinance summary number one. Article four, section nineteen A. Purpose additions to nineteen A one and nineteen A six and new sections nineteen A nine through twelve. These were just all of the additions to the purpose, statements of purpose within the PRD ordinance, which we discussed. Throughout the summer.
Yep.
Um, I don't know if you guys want me to leave them off or are there any changes in there that you guys wanna see?
It's everything we've already been talking about.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I mean, I don't know about you guys, but I'm, I'm, I have the draft warrant article language. Here and the memo recommendations here, so we haven't, so we can, is that what we're gonna want to present it?
Yep.
Yeah, so I don't think we have to read.
Okay.
Everything unless anybody, you know, saw something that jumped out at the, like, when they read it.
Um, and I don't know if you guys want to. Have you dealt with your other ordinances that you're putting forward for twenty twenty six? If you voted on them one at a time to recommend them for public hearing or if you wanna wait until the end and.
We voted on them one at a time.
Does it make sense to do that? I I don't wanna dictate.
Yeah. I think one at a, I mean, not line by line, but like each, your amendment unless there's something that we wanna change.
So in other words, uh. Recommendation for Article four, section nineteen A, the purpose. We, we would vote on.
All six.
Yeah.
Changes.
Right. And do we do that now?
If we're ready to, unless there's discussion.
So potentially for the, these six, six recommendations, we're gonna have six votes right now.
One vote for this, for these.
But these, but these six recommendations, we're gonna vote six times. Right now, we're gonna vote six times. Yep, yep, for all the different.
Oh, I was gonna say we would vote on all these at once.
At one, yeah, that's one.
Okay.
But, but here, we're gonna vote, this, we're out here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, everybody read that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did.
Everybody?
Most of it.
Most of it, I, I don't know that we should be writing on something that not everybody's read.
Well. Then should we read through it real quick?
Sure. Um, number one. Promote the conservation of the natural environment and the development of land in harmony with natural features of the specific site proposed for development. New language, including the protection of wildlife corridors and habitat connectivity to maintain ecological functions across the landscape. Number six. Promote a wide range of housing opportunities for individuals and families of various ages and economic circumstances. New language, including housing that meets the needs of the local workforce. Number nine, all new language. Encourage development patterns and building practices that support climate resilience and reduce vulnerability. To environmental stressors, including extreme weather and heat. Number ten, all new. Promote sustainable site planning and and development techniques that reduce the quantity of impervious surfaces. Conserve energy and water and support long-term environmental stewardship. Number eleven, all new language. Foster a diversity of housing types, including smaller units, multifamily dwellings and cottage-style housing. Within a unified development framework to help meet the varied housing needs of the community. Number twelve, all new language. Support development that strengthens the local economy by creating or preserving housing options affordable to essential workers. Young professionals and residents on fixed incomes. And again, those are all additions to the purpose section of the ordinance.
And we looked at all of this before, it's just the outstanding questions from. The ones we took to community engagement public forums, okay.
Yeah, this is all language that you guys agreed to last summer.
Yeah.
Okay. Any comments or? Thoughts?
I'm trying to read.
So I'll make a motion to move forward with. This.
Purpose.
Um, amendment.
To the purpose section.
For, to the purpose.
I'll second that. Can you vote?
Yes.
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 Oh, yes.
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 Yes, sorry.
Okay, all right, that's approved. And now under recommendations would be number two.
Yeah. Article four, section nineteen V one, standards and criteria, multi-unit structures and condominiums. New sections nineteen B A. Lowercase from a numeral one through three. So this one. All of this language is what was proposed initially during the summertime. Um, should we read them or have you guys read these?
I did have one question on. Small number two there, it says up to three dwellings for no more than twelve hundred square feet. Does that mean number one, they can be, the five dwelling units can be bigger than twelve hundred square feet each?
Yes.
Okay, so the twelve hundred is just for the number, number two.
Correct, and the small number one is specific for workforce housing, so there's going to be. An affordability criteria that those units have to meet, whereas number two, there's no affordability criteria.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, the number two was definitely discussed at the forum. But the language didn't change from what we discussed over the summer and something was brought support to the star and included it in a recommendation to move forward.
Anybody have any comments? On these changes?
Washington two. The language opposed.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, under recommendations, it would be number three.
Article four, section nineteen is equal, spending criteria. Base density and bonus density. Repeal existing sections nineteen B four A per F. Replace with nineteen B four A. Small room numeral one through six and section nineteen B. B small room numeral one through three. Um, the B four A, one through six pertains to the base density. And the B four B one through three pertains to the bonus density.
Uh, that it's, it seems like the consensus was instead of the. Fifty percent, to go to fifty percent for the, the density bonus.
Well, we're on the base density now, right?
Well.
We haven't got to the fifty percent yet, this is just the base density, so. This is where we're saying base density would be the same as it was for traditional subdivision in a PRD.
Um, however, well, not adding fifty percent. That comes in at the beginning of the standards and criteria and then it's spelled out in the bonus densities.
Okay.
Because the. Existing language um referenced bonus density for workforce housing there. So I amended the language so that it's still in that order.
Okay.
Um, but this is a place where the fifty percent. We're recommending fifty percent based on reactions during the forum, um, once it goes through the grain. But this is something that. I mean, obviously you guys have discretion over all of this, but I don't wanna spring this on you.
Well, I think you're some, the, both of these summaries indicate that everybody was good with the fifty. The first time they weren't when they didn't understand it, but once everyone understood what, then everybody liked the fifty percent.
Yeah, and I think it came up, the concerns were because of the ADU thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause everyone, I mean, the difference between thirty and fifty is really negligible.
Yeah, it is pretty insignificant.
Um, but when the ADU concern was introduced, that's when it became. More complicated.
Yeah. And we'll get to that.
Okay, so, so.
Do you wanna discuss that first? Would that be helpful?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, so there are a few things with the ADU. Um, the first thing is in the Form one D three document. And include a paragraph to incorporate into the ADU building. The last page, sorry, I forgot that one, the bottom of page two.
Um, so, yeah.
You can, you cannot limit or not prohibit ADUs. On single-family dwellings regardless of the development type. However, you don't have to allow two, so you don't have to allow an attached and a detached. You can limit it so that within a PRD, you're only allowing one ADU per single-family detached dwelling. The other provision that I found in um the updated law. Is you can prohibit, they took out the bit where you can't prohibit it on manufactured housing. But you can prohibit ADUs on housing that is um. You know, they don't own the land, so in a condo situation, even if they are. Single-family individual or detached, you still could add that into your zoning that you're not allowed to have an ADU if you don't own the land. So I found two, I don't wanna call them loopholes, but ways to make this work with a PRD that might. Might work for you guys.
Okay.
I think that will be somewhat important um based on the conversations that we had. Um, that we include some, something in our ADU as part of this.
I agree, yep, I agree.
And do you guys know offhand what you already have or um? Not manufactured housing, but you know, do you have a provision that prohibits ADUs where? The.
We do. Oh, no.
We do not.
It says we don't really, right, because you don't have.
Yeah.
Okay, um. So then I guess my question is, if that, it sounds like you guys are interested in doing that. I think that it's possible that what I've written up in the Form one D three, I can just look at the new language you guys are. Um, putting forward for the ADU. Revisions to match the new statute to make sure that this makes sense where I've placed this, but I've done it based on your.
I have that.
But I'm gonna read down this to also add the bit about least. So that. Yeah.
And that time seems so.
It does, it's all evident, and I think that's why it's in the RSA, just to make it slightly clearer, but. If you guys already have that language, it's easy enough to add that to this paragraph. Um.
So it's the definitions. It's the parking. Um.
Oh, you wanna read about the section it's in?
No, I'm, I'm telling you what we've changed.
Oh.
What we've proposed to submit to voters.
Okay.
Is to um line up our definitions with the new state statute. Revise the parking requirement from two vehicles to one, that's both attached and detached.
Um, so you guys are maintaining attached and detached in separate sections within the zone.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, that was it.
Okay, well, that's, that's simple, then I can just add. Another sentence on to.
My pages are out.
You want me to just read this to you guys, I don't know if you all have it in front of you. Um.
Is this the in-plan residential developments, a maximum of one accessory dwelling unit is permitted? For detached, single-family dwelling?
Yes.
And not allowed. When multiple single-family dwellings are attached to each other, which. I think we have that in there already.
Yeah, so this would replace um seven A ninety and seven B ninety.
Okay. Yep. And we have the condominium language in there already too.
But I do want to remind you, kind of like, more closely, the other thing today, where it says, and manufactured housing has to find a number of places, it's been a four thirty one. Um. It wouldn't say that anymore, it would say the new language of the law, which is. Um. The municipality may consider accessory dwelling units associated with rented or leased land.
Okay.
But we will say that municipality, but. Um, you get the point, and I can turn that over really quickly, I think if that's sent to you guys. Tomorrow, I know that's not during one of your meetings, so to give you guys an opportunity to review it, so it can be something that.
Goes for legal review, yeah, okay.
Okay, so with that in mind, with those protection for ADUs in PRD. How do you feel about the fifty percent? Um. What is then to be the. Beginning of our current discussion, the maximum allowable density in any planned residential development shall be calculated using a formally given plan. And may be increased up to fifty percent through specific density on this test follows. Okay, then we. Throw out the um existing density calculation language because there was not a way to. Amend it, um. It's kind of headache, so I just threw it out, I hope that's okay. Um, based density calculation, the applicant shall submit a yield plan depicting a conventional subdivision layout. Consistent with the dimensional and environmental requirements of the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. The yield plan shall reflect what could reasonably be developed on the personal under existing zoning. Without the provisions of the planned residential development section. Fraction should be rounded down to the nearest full number. The achievable base density, including any additional units allowed through density bonus provisions, may be further limited by the capacity of onsite soils. To adequately support wastewater treatment and disposal systems. For the purpose of calculating base density, the total count shall be determined by applying the minimum lot size of the underlying zoning district. To the total tract. To the total tract area. Minus area of all streets and or rights of way in development. For the purpose of calculating and locating open space for section nineteen V six. All undevelopable land and total areas therein shall be shown on the yield plan. For the purpose of planned residential developments, undevelopable land shall include all surface water of underground. All lands with slopes of twenty-five percent or greater. All soils designated by the USDA Soils Conservation Service in cooperation with the Hillsborough County Conservation District. To be poorly drained or very poorly drained. All lands within the one hundred year flood zone and all lands restricted from development by easement. Structures, paved areas, service areas and other developed facilities shall be built only on the developable, developable area. Or developable portion of the track, excepting however, stream and wetlands crossings as shall be necessary for the construction of natural. System of roadways. So that's the beginning part, um. Just to determine base density. Second part of number three from the memo. Um, do you guys want me to read this one?
It's going to be one of these ones?
Yep.
This is a separate amendment, right?
Um, I have some, I have one put together, separated out into two amendments, if that's preferable.
Okay, so we were, we were just working on recommendations, uh, number three.
Moving forward, right?
Yeah. Four, Article four, section eighteen, the, four. Yeah.
And you didn't have all that.
Like, so now we're, um, the B density bonuses.
Yes. But maybe before we discuss density bonuses, you guys should indicate whether or not you'd like two separate amendments and then the one.
Separating again, please?
Yes. It doesn't matter.
Separating it, it's that, an additional thing they have to, you know, consider that's based on the same thing rather than just taking it all out one.
Well, like, like, it won't make sense if one is approved and one is not, so I would think it should be together.
Great.
Right.
Okay, density bonuses, the planning board may grant a density bonus above the base density for developments that incorporate one or more of the following features. The total number of additional units allowed through any combination of these bonuses shall not exceed fifty percent of the base density. Before I go through the list, um, I just want to point out that I did not bring the shared services bonus forward based on feedback at the forums.
The first, especially.
The first one, the first forum was where that really was happening, and it didn't come up much at the second one.
Um, so we can add that back in if you wanted in there, but, um, I took it out, so.
And this doesn't prohibit somebody from doing shared services. It just doesn't give a bonus if they do.
Yeah.
There's no incentive.
No incentive, yeah.
For passing density bonus of planned residential development that guarantees at least twenty percent of total units as workforce housing in compliance with Article four, section twenty-six, and RSA six seventy-four, or can wait for sixty-one. May receive a bonus of one additional dwelling unit for every two workforce adding housing units provided. The total bonus awarded under this provision shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the base density. Um, so B one has not changed from what exists right now, but because it's been reorganized into this section, it was included as part of this amendment. So, that's a present, doesn't always be writing on the blind. I'm sorry. I haven't read this out loud to anybody that's going out and then we. Received, um, number two, small unit bonus, for every two units of twelve hundred square feet or less, a heated living space, one additional dwelling unit shall be allowed. The total bonus awarded under this provision shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the base density. Number three, low-impact development bonuses, A, up to ten percent additional units may be allowed in addition to base density if the development uses LID techniques that reduce total surface surface coverage by thirty percent or more compared to the conventional subdivision layout shown in the yield plan. The planning board shall determine eligibility, eligibility based on a comparison of the PRD proposal and standard layout on the yield plan. B, up to ten percent additional units may be allowed in addition to the base density if the development demonstrates the use of other LID practices as outlined in the site plan, the site plan regulations for stormwater management. The planning board shall determine the eligibility and magnitude of any bonus based on the extent of projected environmental benefits such as improved groundwater protection or reduced land disturbance.
We're going between like thirty and fifteen percent, so.
Yeah.
Anything jump out at anybody?
Well, so, what we expect, what I expected.
Yeah. So I guess, um, entertain it, uh, somebody, want to make a motion to accept, uh, the recommendations, number three.
I'm going to accept the recommendations. Yes.
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 Well, yes.
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 Okay. On to Article four, section nineteen B six. Open space.
Um, so, this one, again, it's in all language that you guys, um, approved during the summertime, that you're continuing the existing open space requirement, and right now it's just one very long paragraph. And so it's reorganizing it, separating it into, um, A through F. And it adds a little bit of language, um, at the beginning, open space areas shall be subject to the following provisions. And then item B, existing language to the new language greatest existing extent possible, strike as much, maintain open space, strike as possible, shall be contiguous, new language, contiguous areas should prioritize the preservation of natural and historic features of the property, including existing stone walls, existing wildlife corridors, stream buffers, protected areas, and other ecologically sensitive resources in order to maintain landscape connectivity and ecological function. And the remaining language within that is all existing.
Make a motion to move forward with this.
Second though, yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Yes, okay.
On the leaf over here.
All right, now we're on to the recommendation number five, Article four, section nineteen B nine. Standards and criteria, other regulations.
So this one just adds one sentence in the beginning, I mean, in the, in the middle of section nine, all health and safety requirements within the subdivision regulations shall apply to planned residential developments.
Make a motion to move forward with this amendment.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. On to number six. Article four, section nineteen C, procedure.
This one just adds a second, on to the end of the procedure paragraph. PRD applicant, applications shall be sent to the fire chief, road agent, and health officer for review and comment. The planning board shall consider any written recommendations received prior to final approval.
Make a motion to accept.
Yes.
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 Look.
Yes.
Yes.
Let's.
Well, and then the other, others provision that I didn't bring forward to you guys for discussion this evening was the structure cap, because that didn't test well at either forum. Um.
You mean, that there'll be no structure.
There will be no structure.
Yep. Okay, on to the workforce housing ordinance summary. Number one, Article four, section twenty-six B, authority.
This just adds one sentence to the end of that section. Workforce housing permitted under this section shall be authorized through a conditional use permit administered by the planning board pursuant to RSA six seventy-four twenty-one two. And this is language you sort of already had in the following section. But it didn't really fit there, so, um, and if you don't have a conditional use permit process, this points to the RSA to kind of cover your backs.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes. Well, I'm just, we've never done a conditional use permit, so I want, I'm concerned that there's not clear instructions.
Well, you already require a conditional.
I know, but we've never used it.
Do you want to just scrap conditional use permits?
Why, why is it here?
Why is it here?
Yeah.
Where it was.
Okay, yeah.
Um, so where it was, it was in section twenty-six C applicability, um.
What is it? Well, how do we benefit from having a conditional use permit or? Um, why would we want to use it?
I mean, it's, it's sort of like one step below a special exception, and I think having it makes it less likely that workforce housing will be developed because it's in one warm hoop. But it's also one more level of review, so if a project comes forward and it's something that the town has never seen before, a five-unit building, maybe four or five-unit buildings or something like that. You know, that's potentially possible if somebody had a large enough piece of land and they wanted to develop that. It would give you more time to review that project. So.
Okay.
Well, since we already basically have it, I don't see a problem.
Yeah.
If we haven't done it before, if we needed to do it now, we'd have to figure out how to do it.
Yeah, there's some stuff in our zoning ordinance around conditional use.
Yeah, if you move a page forward to Article four, section twenty-six C, acclivity. It actually, right, you can see where she was taking it.
Yeah.
So we've always had it in our.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
We're voting for it anyway.
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
Did we get the last vote?
Yeah, it, yes, it was all, it was yes, you did a, yeah.
Yeah.
So number two, going back to workforce housing. Uh, number two, uh, Article four, section twenty-six C. There we go, acclivity. See, that time flies fast.
Sorry, Ken, I'm gonna back up here. We, you didn't bring the structure cap forward, so that means they can have as many as they.
Because you're not wanting to be objected to.
Yeah.
Objected to by.
At the audience.
Everyone there that spoke.
And what, and why?
Nobody liked it.
Because you could do a cottage style, like if it, the smaller size, you could have more units, but if you're gonna have bigger ones, then you would be limited by the space allowed. So this, people were more opposed to multifamily or duplexes and more open to single, smaller, single-family homes.
But how is, I mean, but we're not doing anything else to promote that.
It would be like, it's like a structure, like, that's duplex, but it's one structure.
Yeah.
Whereas that is two little places. So if you had a structure cap, and let's say you're allowed, only allowed two.
Yeah.
Or only, you know what I mean?
No, I, I, I understand that, but then, but we're not doing anything to promote what people are wanting, right?
Well, we do have the size, the, if they do twelve hundred square feet.
Good balls.
They get a bonus.
It really will zero support for the cap.
Okay.
It was more opposition to the multifamily.
Got it.
Okay. Um, so.
Should we?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, this one was reorganized a bit, so bear with me while I read it through. Um, number one, zoning district development importance provisions of this article is permitted, strike as a conditional use in the rural residential and agricultural district, add within the following areas. New section A, as part of a planned residential development subject to Article four, section nineteen, and the town of Temple subdivision regulation. New Article B, within the workforce housing overlay district as defined below. And then number two. Um, this whole section we're about to read is stricken PRD requirements. Projects including workforce housing shall be limited to planned residential developments and follow the procedures of Article four, section nineteen. This section and the town of Temple subdivision regulations. New section two, workforce housing overlay district. A workforce housing overlay district is hereby established and on designated parcels within the town of Temple. The overlay shall include tax map parcel six B nineteen one located on New Hampshire Route forty-five and shall permit workforce housing development in accordance with this section. The workforce housing overlay district allows workforce housing development independent of a PRD subject to the general and procedural requirements of this article and other applicable site plan and subdivision regulations. The workforce housing overlay district is shown on the official zoning map and shall be administered in accordance with the planning board's site plan review process. And all of those are lumped into one amendment because if it's failed, then it'll just revert to what you have. And you'll just be repeating that PRDs are allowed as a condition.
Yeah, so the first forum, there was definitely opposition to this.
Well, the, but the.
You had butter.
But it was a but, the second forum was no problem, so we're gonna go with it. That's the proposal, given that it was just kind of buttering that, that, that shouldn't dictate.
And see what happens at the public hearing.
No, I, I, I'm.
Yeah, we can still call any of these.
Yep, yep. So this is, this, I'm just, I was confused, and I think I've got it now. So what this is saying is this overlay specifically says it's okay to do workforce housing without a PRD. But you can do workforce housing anywhere else, you just have to have a PRD. Right, okay, this, freeze that land up for the town to use easier than otherwise.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I move to accept the language presented.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Uh, number three, Article four, uh, section C two. Why don't I not have that? Why don't I not have that?
We, what's up, you? Fundamentally ownerships, ownership.
Yeah, but then I don't have the number four, number five after that, for some reason. When I put it out.
That.
Our documents, which are the draft warrant language, blah, 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 and after.
So, yeah, I think we're missing the H three, what we have is H.
Let's do that.
It's probably in the workforce housing.
Yep.
Um, red line draft that you sent us, right? So, we look at H three. Yep. That's, do you want me to read it or do you have it? Okay. It says, H three is the general requirements of workforce housing units. Multifamily housing, and this is just the one where it right now says up to six units per structure, and this revises it to five.
We'll talk maybe one at a.
This is the red line for workforce housing one.
Um, this one?
Yeah, H three. Keep going. H, so keep going. Three, yeah.
Oh, no. No need to spell words.
Yeah, I'm looking at this and thinking how we can make it easier without overwhelming.
It's never easier, because you can't attach any descriptive information to the law.
We have gone through this before, yeah. Well, so what I've done in the past is put out two versions, one with the details and one that they'll see in the booth. And then we have them out on voting day.
So this is just missing from our, this is missing from.
Yeah, this is the one that's not on there.
Yeah, so, but we. Yeah, so, but we, so do we need to read?
Number four to read?
Yeah, so I make a motion to move forward with number four revising six, six units to five units per structure in workforce housing.
Second.
Isn't there a added section?
That's the next one.
Oh, yeah, condominium ownership will be next.
Separate one.
How do you vote, Phil?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Now we're on to.
The condominium one.
Number five, Article four, section twenty six H, general requirements pertaining to condominium ownership within a workforce housing development. So it's number four. Go ahead, Sarah.
Dash B, use of the condominium ownership shall not be construed to alter the permitted density, structure type, or use limitation established under this ordinance, nor shall it require additional subdivision approval, provided the development remains consistent with the approved workforce housing plan.
And we have to do this to be in compliance with state statute?
You don't have to do this within the workforce housing ordinance to be in compliance.
Okay.
If you have it in the PRD ordinance, it covers you. Because you have to allow condominium type ownership in majority of the red nations. And so the PRD ordinance will cover you because that is allowed, PRDs are allowed in majority of the presentations.
So, because we're, we're in a, technically at the moment, we're not in compliance with, by not allowing condominium ownership.
I'm not mentioning it in the building.
But by having this here, does this just, does this just say the only place where you could have a condominium is within workforce housing?
Nope, um, it just allows it, you know, workforce housing, it makes it clear that condominiums are allowed in workforce housing.
But they're also allowed.
They're also allowed in PRDs, so don't take this every new provisions.
But it clarifies things.
I don't believe it does any harm, the only part that makes the amendment offer.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Good. So that um, takes care of that. Recommendations for the draft warrant article language. Go ahead, Sarah, I'll let you.
Your next steps, like one point being sending out a mail or events of the town hearings to the county attend. Just the first part, um, I don't know if you just had them do that, but that would need to go out to party stepper, so. I guess it kind of gained your interest. If it's like that, or you already sent one out generally for all of the, all of the.
We, what did we do last year?
Uh, I think we just posted, I don't think we did a postcard. You know, in the newspaper and then, and then there was an e-blast.
I think they have the mailers or most of the papers, the files.
December fourth, public, public notice needs to be posted and draft warrants needs to be posted. So I've just put that in here as a reminder, I have put together some draft public notice language, names of that and new channels. I don't know if you'll wanna use that because you've already, you're already developing some for all, all of the other warrants, so.
Yeah, I will have to talk about that, how we want to number and present all of these.
Yeah, and I'll send, um, all of the warrant information, all, all of the language in a word doc, so you guys can fill in the numbers and edit it as needed.
Okay.
It's number ten, we have another house report due, so Christine, I'll get that through the first week of December.
Great.
December sixteenth, public hearing one. Is that, okay, correct, and do you guys want me there for the public hearings?
Please. Not that you have to run them, but it's helpful. No, not to take the blame, to help clarify.
Look here, so it's. It's eager for me to be one of the people that are angry at, or angry.
Well, then you're well versed and you, you can explain it better, articulate it better than.
Yeah.
A lot of us publicly.
Hope they're not confused. Um, okay, January sixth, revisions to the ordinance based on the first public hearing. Are you guys planning on meeting on January sixth?
Uh, yeah, I think we'll have to.
Okay. January eighth, public notices posted for the second public hearing, January twentieth, public hearing two. February third, the final warrant language is due to the town clerk. February tenth, we have another house report due, I'm like wishing away our whole winter, you guys. And then the question of whether or not you guys wanna have a final mailing in advance of the town vote at the end of February.
So the select board typically sends out a postcard with all the dates of all the hearings, so. Yeah.
And I don't know how we'll do a mail or cover all of this anyway.
Yeah, it's just gonna be the thing. Then mentioning the word zoning.
Yeah.
Okay.
So backing up to December fourth. That's, is that the first? Is our, that's a Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah.
What would, what, what are, what are we, what is our task?
So between now and then, um, I'll send this to legal for review, and I already gave them a heads up that this was coming. So hopefully they have somebody ready to review it before our next meeting. And I, like I said, I was gonna find Laura tomorrow at the conference and.
Be nice to not get it the day before, too, you know, on Monday.
Yeah, so we have time to react.
Like, by Friday, the week, weekend before, so.
Yeah.
For a few days.
That would, yeah.
Um, do you guys want me to be here for the December fourth meeting?
I think we'll let you know if something comes back from legal, then we may need to talk about it.
Or you could, you could zoom.
Yeah. Or we can, yeah.
Probably don't, she probably, unless it's, yeah, we could zoom.
So when you say on the fourth draft posted, so we're gonna get legal review by Friday maybe, and then Tuesday, we're all gonna post this?
It, it has to, yeah, it would have to be posted by that.
By the Thursday.
Wednesday, the day after, right?
After us we posted.
Well, do we meet on the fourth?
Of December?
Yeah, that's the day of the meeting.
Let me look at the calendar. We, we're in December second, we meet on the second.
So we get a couple days, we get to meet first.
Yeah.
And then figure it out.
Yeah.
Right, so, yeah. It has to be posted by Thursday, so whatever notice goes to the ledger on that Wednesday will be generic, and then it will direct people to the places in town where they can get more information, and it'll be up on the web.
And this, this all the language.
Yes, yep. Yep, and posted around town in paper copies.
We're not gonna have anything else really on the agenda except for the solar.
Well, the solar stuff will have to go for legal review, too.
Yeah, I'm just seeing for that December second meeting.
Yes.
We're not, we don't have anybody lined up for, we don't have a full.
We don't.
At the moment, I, I think we'd be able to really concentrate on the potential um, zoning changes and you know, for that meeting.
Yeah.
Do it right and. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know.
Thank you, Sarah, so much.
So I'll look for an updated version. I, and I, I mean, I'll be at the conference, so by the end of the day, you know, when I get home, I'll look for it.
You guys need anything else for me today?
We'll let you know if you need to zoom in on the next meeting. Yep, or Christine will.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just see what we get back.
Thanks again. I say. Okay, so, uh, the marsh, uh, I don't want.
Well, let's talk about the solar.
Well, it's on there. Solar's there. Do you, is there an updated one? Oh, interesting.
You have November fourth. It's our last meeting.
Oh. I don't know, but, no, I got.
You know what?
It's the time.
Oh.
The second agenda, it, amended.
I, and I also, I sent that to you as the pre-review, and then I I sent it out to everyone and I corrected.
Okay, love it, doing really good on the old one. Right now.
No, I mean, I think it made sense to move that up anyway, so that was no big deal, but.
Okay.
The solar stuff.
The solar's next on the agenda.
Yes, please.
Okay.
So I, I'm sorry, I, I forgot to change the date on the cover. So it still says October, but it, it was November, November version. So, um, I did send it to the Soul Smart team and our person. I guess he has a writer, anyway, Frank Richter, who came, spoke a while ago, and it was reviewed, and they sent it to some, the national person, it was all looked at, and so they made a couple of changes, and unfortunately, my printer, I think, ran out of ink, but everything that was in red, if you have a red version.
Everything in red.
Were the changes. Yes. In Town of Temple.
This page is Town of Temple.
On page two. And then page three, same thing, just temple. And then I think like, not till we get to page five.
So all this is red.
So, yeah, this whole, um, table of uses has changed. So, um, the historic district was broken out, which I think, I think we talked about. Um, because different rules will apply, and it's just the house is designated, and the historic district commission would have oversight of those properties, um, and they do have to give an approval before the solar permit could be signed. Um, then we talked about that, what happens with a ground mounted residential use, um, the size question came up, and also if it's the primary use, like if it's on in a budding lot. And basically, they said that it's, even if it's on in a budding lot, it's still considered an accessory use because it has to be tied to the house. It's not standalone and being shipped out. It's connected to the house, so they still consider that an accessory use. So that's how I put it in here. Um, so that whole section where I had ground mounted, primary use residential, and then different requirements for commercial, that just, just came out. And so everything that's ground mounted, primary use is commercial, basically. And so ground mounted um, accessory use is still the same requirement, so, so this is the chart and the concom's concern was to still make it um, accessible for ground mounted. So that's why it just says permitted for ground mounted accessory. And they talked about the size question. And said, you know, we, probably we don't need to worry about it because it's for a house, it's not gonna be, or it could be for agricultural, but then there's different requirements for that. Does that make sense?
I don't understand why there's restriction on that versus accessory use solicitations cannot generate more than one hundred and twenty percent of the annual.
So that's, that's, they said that is quite a lot. Hundred and twenty percent is a lot. So that was how they thought addressing the size thing, because doing acreage or number of panels is gonna change based on technology. So what you'd have now may not be the same. So I don't know, Kathy, if you wanted to, you may know more about this than I do, but that, that was how it was explained to me, that if you you go with that percentage, you're covered on the size versus acreage or lot coverage because it could change.
Yes, or now people can have to please, how much?
Well, it should be in the materials that come in.
Uh, but only for primary, right?
This is accessory use. Yeah, primary use has a whole different set of, right.
We're requiring any proof of how much you use now, that's gonna be a significant, very.
Um, maybe.
You can just go out of company, I mean, when they want.
They should tell you.
You can go to Anderson.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they send when they have some.
They would know, yeah.
Yeah.
Me, I understand what that's a search name, although there is some concern in the power companies that everybody's pushing too much power back. They can't deal with it all on the local. The local grid, but that's a secondary concern.
I, I think also the, the concern would be that really it's a primary use, if you're doing two hundred percent of what you, you're not really doing at your house, you're selling it.
You're selling it, it's commercially used.
Okay.
Well, we do eighty percent, so I'm not worried.
Bottom line is, nobody's gonna care unless, unless ever someone reaches back and says.
Right.
These people are generating a hundred and fifty percent.
Tell them to stop giving us their electricity, we don't wanna buy the electricity.
Yeah, they have a pretty.
Pay some of the panels.
Pretty powerful.
I think this is really when you're designing it, again, if you do fifteen hundred kilowatts or whatever it is now. Yeah, then you can't design it for more than a hundred and twenty percent. Yeah.
Does everybody okay with the table of uses then?
Yeah.
And then they, you talked about the hundred and twenty percent, and then, um, then just changing to solar energy systems, it used to say conditional use, and now it says.
Zoning board.
Uh, they have to go to the ZBA if they don't meet the requirements that we've outlined coming in the next section. Um, we added that ten foot restriction for the height, that was the recommendation. Underground conduit is encouraged, that was added. I think that was from the, um, conservation commission as well, is that reasonable?
Crush stone.
Crush stone is also from the, um, conservation commission, I tried to get more clarification on that, if it needs to be size or a depth. And I haven't heard back from, it's for UNH cooperative extension, so I don't know if you guys have access to any resource, or if it's okay to say crush stone, I couldn't find anything anywhere on like DES or.
Yeah.
If you look at a.
It's not a road, so it's not the same.
Shoreland stuff.
Yeah, I looked at that, too, and.
They just say crush stone, too, right?
There's nothing specific.
I think that's the idea.
Yeah, so we just say crush stone.
Vegetative ground cover ore. We're just adding crush stones, so.
Right.
You're not limited to just vegetative ground cover.
Right.
Yeah.
Or crush stone.
You do, yeah.
Right, you do either one.
But they don't want concrete or pavement.
Right. And I looked in the stormwater manuals and all, I couldn't find anything that was specific to this.
Everybody has some definitions.
Yeah.
Yeah, three quarter wash, tap in, sure, I didn't, that's crazy.
So you just added the word statement.
Yeah.
Oh, instruct, instruct solar carport, uh.
A non-residential district, because we don't have any non-residential districts. Um, yeah, and then code compliance, state and local plumbing standards, because we don't have local plumbing standards. Um, let's see, then. So I just added the word solar permit, because it, I think it said building permit, and we have a separate solar permit. And then I just added.
This was all red.
Yeah, then I just added under site plan approval, that's B two. Um, A through D is just off of their recommended changes to the solar permit application, just to make them consistent.
And you changed from electrical inspector at the bottom there to the town temple building.
I did, yeah. Yeah. Um, let's see.
The only thing I have, it's just, why doesn't it have to be the scale?
Um, it does for the commercial, it doesn't for a residential.
You can just jar it on a napkin.
Which is what they do now.
Actually, most of the.
So you don't have to have it surveyed.
Goes right against everything.
I know, sorry.
The companies will come and do it, give us a huge packet of all sorts of information.
Yeah.
You know, there's no napkins.
Yeah.
Um, let's see. This interconnected, this B, I highlighted that because I wasn't sure if we wanted that or not. Grid connected systems shall file a copy of a final approved interconnection agreement with the municipality prior to operation of the system. And then there was the footnote that said this was optional, do we want to keep these records?
I care, we have, they already have to file this.
Okay.
There's no reason they should have to file.
So we can take that out.
We can take that out. Okay. Uh, then the next one, just properties in the historic district versus historic buildings. Um. And then, so that first paragraph changed to solar energy systems on properties within. The designated historic districts or on locally designated historic buildings, which I don't think we have any locally designated historic buildings, but it doesn't hurt to leave that in. Uh, let's see, what else?
Instruct this whole.
Then, yeah, so that I had in there when we talked about residential primary use versus commercial, so we don't need that. For residential, so this is for, the rest is for all ground mounted primary use.
Added this.
Yeah, I added the phrase primary use, yeah, even though, I mean, it says it at the header too, but just to be clear. Um, general design. Why did I? Oh, um, visual impacts. I think I highlighted that because we, I didn't know if we had any additional screening or fencing requirements. That apply in general.
Well, we have said that, that's about it.
Just our regular, yeah, so we may not.
Commercial, then yes, it could be.
We can.
Yeah, I think work of this reading.
Yeah. I mean, I think we can leave it in, right, it doesn't.
It just, it should be minimized.
Yeah.
There's not even any threshold.
Right, right, just to take it into consideration.
That last sentence out of there.
Shall be underground, except when financial costs are prohibited.
I, I mean, who's making that judgment?
Right.
I don't know.
If you're building on nothing but ledge. Your entire lot is ledge.
I know, but like, or is it on them? I, I mean, anybody could say.
Yeah, that's too vague.
It's commercial, remember this. Remember this is commercial, it's not residential.
Okay.
Still, still though, I, I think it should be clear, I think that's like.
So how would you like to say that?
Just say.
They should be underground.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or come for, or come for an exception.
Yeah, they, they come and say, hey, look, it's all.
It's all wedge, give me a break, can I get an exception here?
Yeah.
It's actually process.
Okay. So.
Crushstone.
Crushstone.
Water.
Under the storm water management, under five. Um.
With your problem, site plan review regulations.
Yep, so I just referred to site plan review for the storm water.
The storm water, page ten, yes.
Yep, to be consistent.
And then your.
Site plan approval, um, yeah, I just said require a special exception from the zoning board and the site plan review, which is. Consistent with our zoning, because it's commercial. And.
Change storm water at the bottom, because it breaks traditional use and.
Site plan review, yep.
One more.
And then one more on page eleven, it's the abandonment and decommissioning section. Where I've just referred to the demolition permit. The demolition permit for Article eight, section two of the zoning ordinance and conform to the saving of your code.
Well, now what do we do?
Those for legal review, well, we should vote on it if we're comfortable with sending this version for real review.
I'll suck it up.
Yes.
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 Good, off the legal reviewer goes.
Okay, so just as a reminder, we did approve the other changes. Um, based on state statute. So, um, I can ask legal how we should approach. This numbering and formatting for the warrant for people to vote on. I think I might have reorganized my papers here, but, um, that was the parking that ADU.
If you're asking legal, you're just saying which.
Out of format?
Yeah, so we have one for the changes to the accessory dwelling unit definitions, one for the off-street parking. From two to one, that's per the state statute and then, um, same change, but in the ADU for, um, sections for attached and detached. And then the last one, I think we didn't need to do that one. Yeah, the last one was for the building code and fire enforcement, where they just changed. Um, the number, RSA number from a six seventy-four to one fifty-five A, the building code. So. We have a bunch.
Yeah.
And I don't know how we wanna, we can, I guess, talk about it at our next meeting, but I can ask for advice on how to.
That'll be good.
Present it.
Yeah, if you don't mind, that'll be good.
Put the easy ones first.
Well, yeah, I mean, the ones, like, there's some that we don't really have any choice.
That's what I tell people, if they ask, and, and voting, they say, well, now these are mandatory, like, you got no choice.
Well, and I think we need to clarify which ones are mandatory versus which are optional. I don't know, we're.
So as far as the Marsh, um. Antique Automotive Restoration Facility, I did email Alan Marsh. Letting him know that, you know, as a board, we just, we were advised by legal counsel and we also voted as a board that we would. You know, we would, we wouldn't participate in a collaborative thing with a. The zoning board. And that, we look forward to seeing you, if and when you. Are sent to us for, to work with you on state plan, yeah, that was it, and he sent back, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Did anything change with the zoning board since, as I mean, we are having some real difficulties, I know that.
Yeah, well, I gotta, so, uh, real quick, I gotta call, so just segue right into the storage facility. Uh, Devin Harlan didn't call me back. Um, so, but out of the blue, James Stein did, he's on the ZBA. Today. And so basically he just said, I wanna let you know that there's a state law. Um, that you have two years.
Okay.
And so Temple really, he said, we, number one, he said, boom, ours says one year.
Yeah.
So we're by, if they, so he, so basically they, if they go by state law, um, they still do have till next May.
Okay.
You took good with storage.
Yeah, they're, yeah, approval expired, well, per our zoning, but.
Per our zoning, it expired in May, but they really have till next May. Uh, he says that law's been.
We need to add that new.
And James, James is such a nice guy, quiet, nice guy, just says, and you know that law's been there since two thousand thirteen. Okay.
Can you give me the RSA?
Six seventy-four, colon, thirty-three.
Okay.
Uh, Roman numeral four, paragraph B.
We can be more strict.
We, you, yes, but you.
Well, depends on the statute.
Depends, yeah.
Anyway, so that's where that stands.
That's good to know.
And that's pretty much, look at it, nine o'clock, what is, do we have any news?
Um. Just the webinars. New one today.
Yeah, we did, we got it done by nine o'clock. We accomplished a lot.
That's what seven o'clock on the calendar.
Yeah.
You can stay if you want, Bill.
It's a good time.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes.
Meeting adjourned.